Need approval of the minutes at the March 17th meeting. Motion please.
Can we approve the minutes of the March 17th meeting?
Those of you who agree. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. First of all, we'd like to welcome everyone tonight. It's nice we're doing something fun and we really appreciate having all of you show for this great event for us tonight. Mr. Greg Scott is excused tonight, he's not feeling well. And I think there's a word missing. Next, members from Board of Education members, Superintendent and Central Administration. Let's start with Mr. McCartney.
Just one thing, I attended the art unveiling at the high school, Ms. Stevert. Fantastic. Wow, what a great job. To walk those halls now and just have all that displayed is just, is really cool. And the kids are so proud, you can just tell. They were beaming. And what a great turnout this year, too. I've been to, I don't know, three or four in a row and this one, they had to move to the cafeteria, there were so many folks. So, great job, should be very proud.
We had three pieces of artwork this year, so that's proud too. Very great.
Just nothing to do.
Okay. Ruthie?
Um, I'd just like to say I'm glad to be back tonight, it's one of the nights that I enjoy. And it's the first night that I've been back in maybe about four weeks, but I'm feeling better. And I want to thank everybody for their thoughts, for their prayers and for the love. And I'm gonna dig this.
Yeah, you are, Ruthie. Mr. Swit.
You know, I'm looking over this list and I'm thinking, there has to be some typos on these ages of these, the numbers of years these staff members have been here and, but congratulations to again Claudia and your art students and that's it for now.
Joe?
Happy to see everybody here tonight and I'm happy to have Ruth here tonight.
Ms. Faisal?
Hi, Dr.
Mr. Steenland? I mean, not Mr. Boy.
I've been going a lot of things in my life.
I was thinking here when I said your name.
I don't want to look as old as you.
Okay, Ms. Lynn?
No, thank you.
Mr. Commander, yours.
Congratulations to all of you that are out there. Thank you for making the Roseville Community Schools a better place. As Mr. Switnowski said, it's hard to believe that it's been so many years for a lot of You all look great. And thank you do what you do for the Roseville students. Ruth, I want to personally welcome you back and we missed you and we're glad you're here.
Glad to be here.
If I could just give you an update on what's going on in Lansing and then we can all cry together. The EAA bill passed on Friday, it was a 56 to 54 vote. They needed exactly 56 votes to get it passed. There are so many parts of it that are not explained. I talked on Friday to our state rep, Harold Howe, who voted against it. Talked to him 40 minutes and many, many of the questions that are lingering out there, he nor the people that voted for it know the answers to it this time. This week it's going to the senate. If it passes the senate, which it most likely will do, it then goes to the governor for its signature. In plain words, it's a way the state is taking over school districts and trying to establish a state school system instead of a local school system, a county school system. And we're glad to talk with anyone afterwards, so I'll shut up now. If you want more of what's taking place, please talk to me at the end of the meeting.
As much as we are fighting this, the state is fighting this, they got a million people fighting us back. I mean, the ISD has been working tirelessly for this. I mean, the way this reform district is gonna be now, it's gonna change schools like it's never changed them before. So, we're working with the ISD to hopefully, they're saying 250 schools, they can just come in and say, "Bloomfield Hills, we want your school." They don't even, it's not about kids and scores, it's about money. We have enough EAA people from all over the United States who can come in and take over our schools. I mean, it's just, I think once it gets out and the public hears this, the public is not gonna stand for it. Not gonna stand for it, it's very sad.
Just elaborating a second if I could. One of the options, and it doesn't say who has that right to decide which option, that's part of the confusion of it, but one of the options is charters take over. That means the schools are run for a profit. I have no problem competing with a charter school. We can compete with them academically, we can compete with them financially, we can compete with them athletically, but when someone comes in and makes a profit on public schools, on the kids in Ro- in the kids in the state because they establish a charter school and the money goes to them, I have a problem with that. I'll shut up again.
Michigan sold out public education, they really did. Okay, but we're here for happy things, so we're gonna get to that right now. Does anyone from the public wish to be heard at this time? Another public hearing at the end of the meeting. Next, we have quite a few accolades and I'm gonna turn that over to Ms. Faisal. Board members, if you want to come down and congratulate, or if Ruthie, you're not feeling well, or just put some chairs down here.
He's the oldest person in the room in this job because it has to do with ages and years. Very embarrassing, very embarrassing.
You didn't say that.
We have tried a number of different ways logistically to set this evening up in a way that makes sense. And we're trying something a little bit new tonight, so we appreciate your patience if we fumble a little bit. We have grouped together the awards and the gifts by building and we're going to have individuals or folks come up by building and ask the building principal to introduce you to the staff member who's here tonight. The first building is the administration building and the transportation department, and I'm gonna defer to Mr. Steenland. I see Denise here. Come on up Denise. And do you know if anyone's here from transportation?
Yeah, I believe Lori Misher is here and...
Oh, come on up Lori.
See anybody else in the audience from transportation?
Okay.
Denise, by yourself or are you friends with Denise?
Well, Mr. Steenland's gonna tell you all about Denise first of all.
Denise has worked with the district for obviously 15 years here and it's very honorable to be working with Denise. She's got one of the toughest jobs in the district. I don't know if you've ever multitasked by not only answering the phone, but by answering the bus driver's radio calls, along with greeting people to come into the administration building. So, it's a three-phase job, sometimes always, sometimes very stressful, especially in the beginning of the year and when we're trying to establish transportation and people getting to know how the transportation runs. But she does an absolute wonderful job at it, always greets our parents and people that call in with that, the proper attitude and everything, it's just wonderful. A great person to work with and Mr. Massey would love to have been here today but had other plan or had other obligations.
Thank you.
For Lori, it was my pleasure to, I hired Lori many, many moons ago and we had the pleasure of working together when I used to run transportation. Been to a lot of things, I know that Lori was a championship of the bus rodeo for a year and participated for many years representing Roseville Community Schools, which made us very proud. And the way she handles herself with the public and with the smiling face every day as you can see with the students, how they're greeted every morning with the bus. So, it's been an honor and a privilege and hopefully many, many more years.
By yourself?
I brought my husband.
Thank you. Denise, thank you. Denise, is it okay with you?
No, I'm okay.
Good evening, everybody. I am here representing all of the staff that was supposed to be here from my building due to a rash of illnesses and scheduling conflicts. They weren't able to attend. But we had Marcia Boylan with 15 years, Lucia, most people know her as Ms. Dolly, with 10 years, Ms. Fatchman with 10 years, Autumn Pecone, our PE teacher with 10 years, Ruth Post with 25 years, she's an art teacher at our building, Ms. Darlene Stevens with 15 years, Caitlin Wesley with 10 years, and Karen Wersbowski with 10 years. They are all wonderful staff members and it's just too bad they couldn't be here for you guys to recognize them, but thank you very much.
The next building is Eastland Middle School. And Mr. Schumer was called out of town unexpectedly, so he's not able to be here, but I'll ask Mrs. Bucci to handle that.
Thank you, I'm the shorter version of the team. We have a number of staff members that are being honored. Not everyone is here, but I see Kay is here. So, but come on up Kay. Kay Drake, she's a math teacher and I will tell you this, we sat in a meeting today and we had a great time, we got a lot accomplished with special ed meeting today. And she's always here to help everyone, whether it's in math or anywhere. And we're in the hallway and she's always encouraging kids to move along, get to class, get to class. But she's an excellent teacher, well-regarded by everyone on staff. So, we appreciate your years of service and it's great to work with you. Thank you. And I don't, I didn't see anyone else here, but I'll just kind of give you an idea of the types of service people we have over at Eastland Middle School. Larry Carr, I've worked with before, he goes between us and high school, he has 15 years. And then we have Kay and Becky Gardner has 10, 10 years. And Nancy Gitter, a lot of us know Dancy, she's in a lot of the other buildings, she does the project challenge for the entire school district. She has 25. Shelley has, Jacobs has 15 years and Melissa Piper, 15. She couldn't be here tonight. And also Terry Reese has 25 years. And I'm not gonna talk about me, so.
Uh, we could, no, I'll take it. We, her colleagues are volunteering, but I'd like to just...
No, I don't want a roast.
Fay Bucci's been with us for 20 years, spending all of those as a principal. And actually, she has served in a number of different buildings, both at the elementary level and now she's splitting her time between Patton Elementary and Eastland Middle School. So, she knows a lot about the district and she's worked with a number of our kids and we are very pleased to be able to honor her on her 20th year. Thank you.
Mrs. Lada? And if you're...
Mr. Johnson, Fountain Elementary.
Okay, thank you. Can the Fountain Elementary employees come on down? Okay, we're gonna start with our most senior person that is here with us, serving the longest amount of time and I think has the hardest job. Ms. Hoffman is one of our lunchroom supervisors. And not only does she have to supervise 400 and some kids at lunch, but she has to take their money on meal magic, which is another bear in itself. But she is always there, so faithful to be there, always comes in with a smile and the kids truly appreciate all that she does and so do we. So, thank you for all of your work.
My husband Matt.
The next person is Mrs. Bous. Mrs. Bous and I have been traveling together. We started out at Kaiser, then went to Coment and now we're at Fountain. Where are we gonna go next, I wonder?
Staying here.
Okay, good. Cause if you had news, I was hoping you'd share it with me. Okay. Mrs. Bous has been a gym teacher, a resource room teacher, and she's now a self-contained learning disabled teacher. And one of the most amazing teachers for our self-contained classroom. That is so integrated that she has individualized plans for every child and it is just mind-boggling to me what she is able to organize for herself, but the way her children learn and the materials that they can process. And it just goes to show that she works so hard, harder than a lot of people will think that a self-contained classroom teacher does, but because they usually have, usually have lower numbers. But she's got a full class this year and the students are just doing an amazing job. So, we're here to congratulate you for 15 years.
Oh, that's quality, gotta get that baseball for the joint with the Tigers. Make sure you stop by the ball, we've got them, we've got it.
Our next person is Mrs. Barr. Mrs. Barr is one of our latchkey volunteers or employees. 10 years. And these poor gals are, I mean, they're gonna be closer in heaven than lunchroom supervisors because they get them first thing in the morning and then the last thing after school. And for some of those parents who have to work a long day, these are the moms that get homework done, that help with snack and give those children that encouragement before mom and dad pick them up. And she's had a rather difficult year this year, but even through all that she's been through, she has been there through thick and thin with a smile every day and the students just adore you.
I really do enjoy the job and I'm really grateful for it.
Bless your heart. Thank you for your 10 years.
Thank you.
Another gal that I've traveled a lot with, we spent all 10 years together, I think, haven't we? Close to it?
Close to it.
Close to it. And Ari Freiggruber is the other self-contained classroom in my building. And I had the privilege of working with Ari at Mint and now over at Fountain. And she is so highly regarded that we met with a parent just the other day in my office and the parent just wanted to come in and just thank her for what she's done to help her daughter come out of her shell and learn socially how to interact with people. And academically, our children in those classes are just really excelling because of your dedication and we so appreciate you. And for 10 years, I hope for another 40, we can stay together. So, I have two to get through college, so we're gonna be working for a while. So, but thank you. You are amazing, role model, and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Do you want those who aren't here noticed or not?
Yeah, would you please?
Okay. There's some people that could not be here. Mrs. Dorman is our resource room and teacher consultant. She's been in the district for 35 years and just does an amazing job. But today was her birthday and so their family is going out for dinner. Mr. Kamarowski teaches children's hockey, so he had a hockey practice tonight, he couldn't be here. And then I have Mrs. August, who has been a teacher in the district. She teaches second grade at Fountain for 15 years and her daughter broke her foot, so she's home taking care of her after school. So, thank you to all of them.
Those of you who may know that Mr. Schultz, who's our principal at Huron Park School, has been out with, had surgery and has been out a few weeks. I don't see Mr. Ludisansky with us, he's kind of taking his place, but probably in fairness, he hasn't had an opportunity to get to know these folks just yet anyway. So, let me, let me try to help you meet the Huron Park staff. Or Mia could help you. Come on up Angela. Oh, you know what, why don't you all come up and then we'll do this. All right, first of all, we have Ms. Castellione, who is Angela, who's a kindergarten teacher. You know how everybody falls in love with their kindergarten teacher? This lady is an example of why they do. She's devoted to her kids and she does wonderful things with them. And she has spent 15 years doing that so far. How about that? That's right, we're getting good, you know what that is? Angela, I saw somebody that I know you could introduce.
My mom Diane, who's a retired cook from Roseville. And my dad Maurice and my Aunt Rose.
You wanna say hi to the board? The next person in line is somebody who, we've spent a lot of time together, I'm happy to say and proud to say. This is Patty Hanley, who is a teacher consultant at the Huron Park School. And wow, she, if you know her or if your children have ever had the pleasure of being her students, you know exactly the kind of heart and soul that she brings to her work. She takes very good care of those children in her, in her charge and I think she has some family there who are, who are testimony to that tonight. Patty's been with us for 35...
35 years.
Kevin, here's one of those errors you found earlier.
35 years.
Oh, God bless.
First I want to say, I've been with Roseville for 35 years, I also grew up in Roseville. So, I'm very proud to be a part of this family because that's how I've always been treated. I have many people here today, I have my family, my daughter, my son-in-law, my two beautiful grandsons, Noah and Charlie. I also have my best friend back there, Missy, they call her Teresa McNulty, but she's Missy to me. And her mom, Joanne DeSousio, who I, when I started 30 years, my 30-year pen, I had my mom here and she's now passed away and I used to stop at her house every day after school. And now, since then, I stop at Mrs. DeSousio's house several times during the week just to have a cup of coffee with her. So, she's here, I love her like a mom. And I also have my friend Joni and my husband Jim. My family and my friends from Huron Park and I'm just very proud tonight to be here. Here you go, that's all I have to say. I do, I do want to say one thing. I feel that I'm here standing in front of you today for my mentor, who was Mr. Tony DeSousio. He was actually my principal, he was my, again, best friend's father. And he is the person that encouraged me to go on to teach, to be a special ed teacher. Anytime I did anything, I would stop there and always run it past him. There wasn't anyone in my family that had gone to college. So, he was one of the few people I knew that went to college and he helped me so much and I do miss him. Thank you.
That's her.
That's me. Thank you.
Go say hi to the board. She's very heavy, so be careful. All your muscles. We have another special ed... Oh, Mikel, come this way, they, they, they really want to see her.
I have a guest.
This is, the next person you're gonna meet is Mikel Aneski, who is another special education teacher at Huron Park School. She does what's called a resource room program, which is, Mr. Johnson described to you how demanding that role can be and how important it is to have people there who are committed to the, to the role. And Mikel is certainly one of those folks and we are delighted. She's, she's a baby, Mr. Switnowski. She has only been here 10 years. So, and so do you want to introduce anyone?
Well, this is my daughter Ava. And then my son James is at home with my husband. And then I also want to say thank you for all the support from my parents that are here today. Really, I was gonna get emotional. And follow-up of Ms. Hanley, it's easy to do. I also wanted to say to Ms. Hanley, I don't know where she's over there, that she's my mentor and she's somebody that I aspire to be when I'm here at 35 years. So, thank you. Oh, my goodness.
We have penis of you like a...
No, I'm a...
Can I just say Melanie?
Sure.
Laney?
Laney.
This, for all of you, is Laney or Melanie Kazarak. Melanie's first year at Huron Park.
Oh, it is my first year at Huron Park.
But she's also been at Kaiser, if you didn't pick that up. Been with us for a while, teaches first grade, five, six-year-olds, another challenge, but she has been with us now for 15 years and is gonna be here a lot longer than that.
Hey, thanks so much. Yes, my whole family's out there, thank you guys, bye.
I remember when we hired Laney, her parents are teachers and I think they were more excited about her getting the job than she was back then, so. Kaiser School, Ms. Kinch? Mrs. Kinch? Oh, I'm sorry. We have additionally from Huron Park, Ginny Bowman, who's a cook there, Elizabeth Frank Kowiac, who's the aide in the early childhood program, Pat Goldman, who's a latchkey person, Deborah Holland, another aide in the early childhood program, Sandra Macio, who teaches third grade, and of course, Mr. Schultz, were he here, would get his 25-year apple tonight. We'll make sure he does get it. Mrs. Kinch?
Thank you. Thank you and good evening. If I could have my Kaiser team come up and stand with me, please? It's my pleasure to introduce to you Amy Wetzel. Amy currently teaches first grade at Kaiser. She started, when I started at Kaiser, she was in the teacher consultant resource room, so she did a combination as well of those two programs and serviced our, some of our students with special needs. And with some staffing changes, she moved into first grade. She has adopted our new reading mastery program and is getting quite proficient at making all of that work and helping our kids to read. In addition, she serves as one of the leaders of our Marches Reading Month committee and does a fine job with that as well. And we are certainly grateful to have her at Kaiser and appreciate all that she does for Roseville schools.
I see she has a, she has a whole team.
I do have my full team, my husband and my daughter Catherine, my mom, my sister and my niece and my nephew.
And additionally, I would like to also introduce you to Kurt Wilczynski. Kurt also has fulfilled several roles at Kaiser when I started. He had just moved from second grade to fourth and embraced that with great skill and is one of the favorites at Kaiser as well, whether it's second grade, fourth grade or whatever. We had some staffing changes again and Mr. Wilczynski... Um, we had some staffing changes again, and Mr. Wilczynski moved this year to teach a split class, first and second graders this time. So, um, he masterfully handles the variety of levels and, and subjects, and all those things that, um, go into teaching, uh, first and second grade. And on top of all that, uh, when I am not in the building, um, he is my teacher in charge. So, although that happens probably more often than he would like for it to happen, um, I'm certainly grateful to all that he, uh, does to maintain order in the building in my absence, so certainly a valuable asset to Kaiser. And I think he has some folks.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to introduce my wife Kara, my daughter Peyton, whose birthday is actually tomorrow, and Luke, who is sitting on my wife's lap.
Uh, Dr. Whitman.
She has autism, ASD, and she services her district.
Dr. Whitman, the principal at Coment Elementary Schools with us.
Well, I've got the good fortune of introducing you two people that have worked fifteen years. This is their midpoint in their careers. And first person I'd like to introduce to you is Mr. Steck. He's probably one of the few people I can actually see eye to eye in the district. But I want to let you know, yeah.
Do you call those folks out here?
Yeah, come on.
If you can't remember, get a better shot.
Sure. Sorry about that. But, uh, I kinda, I gotta tell you a funny story real quick about Mr. Steck. I first started here eight years ago, and he worked at Pierce Elementary School with me, and he taught sixth grade. Um, he's since been in Coment Elementary School since we've closed the building, is that correct?
Yep, he's signed for one-year at Coment.
So he's been at Coment ever since, so I gotta let you know this. Uh, this year, we had our open house, and I introduced Mr. Steck to the entire student body and also our parents in the school community. And I introduced him as our special Iron Man, remember that? Mr. Steck actually is a very athletic person, he's a decathlete. And one of the things I've noticed is I always went triathlete, I'm sorry. Triathlete, it does make a difference. But anyway, I want to let you know that I introduced him as our Iron Man here in the building, but he is truly an Iron Man in our school because he does so much for our kids and in our, in our building. He's, uh, also, we started working together in August because we ended up going to the state to do some extra work for the district and everything. And we really appreciate everything he does for, here, not only in our district, but also at Coment School. So, Mr. Steck, congratulations, fifteen years in your career. Unfortunately, Mr. Steck is just here alone, but I would have to say I'm here with you as well, so, and Mrs. Mickens, so. Mrs. Mickens here's been working in the district for fifteen years. She has the good fortune of being the spouse of Mr. Major Mickens, who's the assistant pro-
He has the good fortune.
Yeah, you're right. That, I stand corrected, of course. Anyway, I want to let you know, she's our first grade teacher at Coment School. Um, she's very soft-spoken, and don't confuse Mrs. Mickens for being soft-spoken, because she can be very direct as well. Um, I want to let you know, at the beginning of the year, I had, uh, decided to take some changes in the building, and we were discussing assignments, and I, I brought her in and one of her colleagues, and we had a discussion about, okay, who's going to teach language arts, and who's going to teach math, science, and social studies? So I said, you know, I can't really make a decision, I want to let you guys deliberate and decide what you want to do. And probably within ten minutes of the conversation, they both came back and told me, or actually her colleague told me, "Mrs. Mickens will be teaching language arts." So she made her decision instantly and everything, and you know what? We really do appreciate her decision because she's doing a phenomenal job with our kids in first grade, and we really appreciate everything that she does for us in the school and for the district. So, congratulations, fifteen years, you've got fifteen more to go.
Thank you, I would just like to thank my family for support. I have my husband Major with my daughter Maya, and my brother Wendell.
Now, this is the thorn between two roses. Thank you, dear. Uh, Mrs. Bucher, you're back up again?
Back up again.
For Patton to talk about her Patton Elementary staff, if they would come forward.
Oh, thank you, I'm back. Well, I have a great staff at Patton, but tonight we're honoring two wonderful ladies that I can't just live without. So, Ms. Gaska. Now, Ms. Gaska I met this year, and I'll be really honest, I wasn't too sure because she has her way about her, but the most wonderful thing I found out is that she's, I don't know how to explain it, she has such humor. And, uh, she has, she's got this storytelling kind of thing going on. She can tell you the best story about anything and make it sound like, oh my gosh, I should be in her classroom. Her kids are just so entwined with the art of storytelling that they just sit and they listen. The parents love her, she was our teacher in our building of the year this year, and so many persons in our sta-, in our building and on our staff absolutely have noticed everything you've ever done. She's recycling, let me tell you about recycling. I was, I used to do recycling at Fountain all the time, and we thought we had it made. Well, I'm telling you, not until you see what we do at Patton every morning, well, it's just absolutely made. We have a little sign about the garbage bags, we don't eat them, uh, but we put them in this basket. We, uh, we have the kids just doing everything. But when it comes to teaching, she truly is an artist at work. She truly is. And we have thirty-five years, so I'm going to just pass this to you, okay? All right, come on over.
Now, I would just like to say thank you. I have a lot of support through all the years, and I'm living the dream and hope to be back in five more years.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thirty-five years, yes, yes.
This was the other one that I said there, after there was a problem with, that was a typo, thirty-five years.
Yeah.
My kids, that's right.
Yeah.
This is the, uh, one of our favorites from along the line.
Thank you, thank you. Mrs. Lager, I am so happy that we are back together.
Yes, we are.
We are, we are. Mrs. Lager, everyone truly knows that it's the secretary that runs the building. And because I have to travel back and forth, she is, she is everything a, a person could ever have, a best friend, a coworker, a mother, she takes good care of me every day. But the most important thing is that you take care of the kids and the parents, and every morning, no matter what happens, she smiles. And it could be the most craziest day in the world, and there's Mrs. Lager, you would never know there was any stress in her voice. Good morning, morning Patton, Ms. Lager. And so, all these years you've been here, done a great job, I know Dr. Whitman would agree with me. And, uh, and, uh, Ms. Glenn and all the other principals, they have had the honor of working with you.
I started out with Mrs. Swanson.
And Ms. Swanson, Sharon Swanson.
Yes.
But I appreciate you every day, more and more, all the time, and everyone else does too.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your years of service.
Thank you.
I'm not going to say anything, I'm not much for talking, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Um, I'm just going to comment that if I'm correct, I had a call from Mrs. Glenn today that, um, Steelon Elementary Staff is not going to be with us tonight, so I'm going to skip right over to Roseville Middle School because I see Cindy Larson in the back of the room, and Jeannie's here to handle that? Thank you. Mrs. Jeannie Peterson, who's our special education director.
Thank you, yes, I'm not Dave or Jason, uh, just stand in for them tonight, and it'll be a pleasure to stand in for them. Cindy Larson has been with the district for fifteen years, and I had the pleasure of getting to know Cindy when I was assistant principal over at Roseville Middle School beca-, before I came over to this building. So Cindy does just a fantastic job in terms of, of teaching, um, our learning disabled students there. Um, she does co-teaching, and she's also done some, some pull-out classes, some resource support classes for them. The one thing that Cindy really has is a, is a really fine quality is, has to do with her organizational skills. Takes a great deal of organization to run a middle school program. You're in different core classes during the day, English, math, your, your history and, and, um, science classes, and having to get to know all of that content so that you can assist students when they need help. Takes quite a bit of, quite a bit of time and quite a bit of dedication. So it really is a pleasure to, for, for me to stand in here and introduce Cindy with her fifteen years of service.
Thank you very much. No, I'm here by myself, but I'm here with a lot of colleagues that are also being honored, so I'm pleased to be in the midst of everybody too. Thank you.
And our, our other honoree from Roseville Middle School is Sue Van Mailey, who, uh, if you, we have a lot of people who compliment us on the way our buildings look and the kind of care that's taken to keep them polished and shiny. Sue Van Mailey gets a lot of the credit for that. She's an extraordinary person in terms of how she does her job. Mr. Steelon, uh, do you know, pick Sue's number, you want to make a guess? I, I would have lost this one. Twenty-five years.
I know. And you know, you know, one other thing, I know it's hard to believe, Sue and I went to school together. And you'd never know that with looking at the two of us, obviously, but, uh, uh, one thing I'd like to say about our custodial staff and Sue at Roseville Middle, it just makes a, a world of difference. I don't know if you remember, you know, five years ago even, we had a lot larger staff over in that building. Building's not getting any smaller, but the, the staff that's responsible to take care of them unfortunately is. But they're still holding strong, and we still get compliments from ISD, we get compliments from other districts and other people within our facilities. And again, that's because of the staff we have over there like you, Sue, so we do appreciate it. She graduated, you know, again, with me, I might hate to admit it, Sue, but we did go together. Um, I'm on my thirty-fifth year, believe it or not.
Do you have anything you want to say about Jen?
My, I do have my mom here, she's a retired cook from, um, the high school, Jen White. Thank you, Mom. And my husband would have been here, but he's so much of a dedicated worker, he's at work right now. He's a custodian also.
Thank you.
He really was.
This is, one thing I'd like to point out is, um, her husband recently transferred over to Roseville Middle, so now they're working together as a team, which, uh, again, it's a good, it's a good mix, a good fit.
Absolutely. Lucky for that building. Mr. Headmark. Mr. Pete Headmark, the principal at Roseville High School.
Thank you, Ms. Fazel, just a little trip. I've been scanning the crowd, and I think we have twelve of twenty-one people here tonight, which if that was professional baseball, we'd be like batting five-eighty-five, and that's pretty good. Um, just a wonderful group from the high school, I'd like to call them up. I know that, um, let me take these off. Um, Mr. Cheshire is here from the band program. Ms. Copla is here from counseling, and Ms. Del Pias is here from counseling as well, if you'd come up. Ms. D is here from hu-, uh, life management. Ms. Houghton from drama, she made her dramatic entrance, we, we saw that. Uh, Mr. Kaner of the math department. Ms. Levecq of social studies. Ms. Martin of the math department. Um, Ms. Nielsen from the kitchen, please come up, Linda. Ms. Ramel from science. Ms. Steber from the art department. And Carolyn Zekindweed is here from world language. I don't think I missed anybody from the high school, did I? Is there anyone else out there? And what a, first of all, what a fabulous crew of people, what a fabulous turnout. Um, thank you, because it's a lot more fun to honor you when you are here. We appreciate that. Um, they know that I could talk for a long time, we've done that before, but I told them that I'd have them out of here in a reasonable hour, so I just want to say a few things about the group in general and then let them introduce. Um, Mr. Kaner, or, excuse me, Mr. Cheshire of our math, our band department, instrumental music, jazz band, he's been between the high school and the elementary schools, he does a phenomenal job, the kids love him and the parents love him, and our music program is in great hands. We have Ms. Houghton of our drama department, uh, and basketball coach, and English teacher. She's done a little bit of everything, and does a wonderful job, uh, pulling all those kids together. And, um, for example, I know how much the kids love their lip syncs, and we don't want to let those go, do we, Angie? Ms. D runs our vocational childcare program, it's three two-hour block, she has no break at all during the day, September to June, she's going, 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 in and out of the high school, back and forth to elementary schools, and those kids work so hard, um, she is like a drill sergeant. And she has them loving up those little elementary kids and taking good care of them, and hopefully some of these kids are going to go on to be teachers and make us very proud, and we're proud of the job you do, Sue. Mr. Cheshire's been here ten, Ms. Houghton's been here ten, Sue's been here twenty-five and twenty, twenty? Um, Ms. Del Pias of our counseling department, I've worked with Ms. Del Pias at the middle school and at the high school, she does a wonderful job, uh, gets those kids paying attention, do what they need to do, turn in those scholarship applications, and that is no small task. You'd think the kids would trip over themselves to get money that's out there, but sometimes you have to lead the horse to water. Uh, Ms. Del Pias, would it be twenty-five years?
Twenty.
Twenty. Mr. Kaner's ten, correct? Mr. Kaner in our math department also runs our static club, uh, he does a wonderful job, he's a terrific role model for students, uh, has been playing some morning basketball through the years, and, um, keeping kids involved in school that way. Data-driven, makes good decisions, has led our math department and made some real good adjustments to get our production up even higher in our enrichment classes, and we're very proud of that. Thank you, Mr. Kaner. Ms. Levecq of our social studies department, um, steady like a rock. You know exactly, uh, that Ms. Levecq, when she's on the job, is going to take care of it. My own daughter had Ms. Levecq for her teacher and said, "Dad, I can't believe how smooth and orderly her class is every day." It's like, people are like little soldiers in there, and they just take care of business. And you know what? My child loved that. It was so, such a relief to her every day, to just know that everything was going to go in order and be taken care of. And Ms. Levecq, um, I want to say that would be ten years, correct? Uh, we appreciate your hard work, and we are looking forward to AP US History next year, I believe, with you. Ms. Ramel, twenty-five years in the science department, middle school and high school. Um, Ms. Ramel is a phenomenal role model for our young ladies in science especially. She also has a law degree and is a patent attorney, so she's combined science and law and her, her love of both, and pushing kids towards science, technology, engineering, and mathematics careers. Uh, she has done that every year. Also sponsors our game club after school, and they come up with some crazy games. Uh, Uker, board games, fantasy games, like Dungeons and Dragons kind of fantasy games, things like that. Uh, they, it's just a nice place for kids to be, the Uker Club, so thank you, Ms. Ramel, for that. Ms. Copla of our counseling department, uh, our counseling leader, if you will, our department head, um, Lori has, is it twenty-five years, Lori? Uh, her experience and her wisdom really makes that counseling office run very well, and we appreciate that. Also very involved with the, uh, as is Ms. Del Pias, with the Coalition Against Drugs in the city. And Ms. Copla is our representative to the Kiwanis Club in the city, um, does a great job with that for us. Ms. Nielsen in the kitchen. Um, Linda is highly involved, far more than you think that a cook might be in our, in our running of everything. For example, during our ACT testing week, uh, we, we came to Linda with some crazy ideas about how we wanted to feed every single kid in the building, but not just in the kitchen, we wanted little food kiosks all over the place, so the kids could come in, get their breakfast, get to the testing, and make it all happen. And she made it happen. And, uh, we appreciate that very much. We appreciate your, let's solve the problem and make it work attitude, Ms. Nielsen. Ms. Mar-, uh, Linda has, um, twenty-five years in the kitchen. Uh, Ms. Martin in the math department, twenty-five years. Ms. Martin is, uh, regularly involved with the other teachers in developing curriculum, getting ready for the core curriculum, uh, working with the math department, taking leadership role in creating that new material that we need to have. They tell us that they need to have, but apparently we need to have it, um, because math changes. Uh, Ms. Martin runs a phenomenal math class, um, it's, it's orderly, the environment is ready to learn, and at the same time, if I go to Ms. Martin- Ms. CZW, affectionately known to us, Carolyn Zekine-Weed of the world language department, Spanish and biology when we need her. All right. Carolyn does a phenomenal job with the world language. She runs the Spanish classes and then also takes care of our Spanish and world language club, gets the kids totally immersed in the world language experience, and they do a great job, they really, they really love it, they really do. And brings us to Ms. Steber, 25 years, art department. This isn't Ms. Steber's last year, but we do know that next year somewhere in there might be, might be when she hangs up those horsehair brushes. We're going to miss her very much, she does a wonderful job. The artwork at the high school on the walls, large part, big thanks to Ms. Steber and her program. Very professional, gets our kids artwork out there in the public, the Wayne State competitions, the Anton Arts Center in Mount Clemens, all of those wonderful things for our kids to see real-world experiences with their artwork. So this is a wonderful crew of people, and we are very well represented by them.[1484.48][1484.48](Applause).
I'd like to thank my wife Tracy and my daughter Lila.
Hello. I really shouldn't speak because I'm going to move myself to tears because I'm pregnant and I have a lot of pregnancy hormones. I've cried at every single person's speech in here tonight. I just want to thank everybody, I love working with you and with Pete, and I want to thank you guys for recognizing, recognizing us tonight, so thank you.[1515.83][1515.83](Applause).
Indeed, I would like to thank you for giving me five more years towards retirement.[1523.53][1523.53](Laughter). I'm here tonight with my husband Steve and my son Matthew. Thank you.[1530.42][1530.42](Applause).
I'm here with the Roseville family, so thank you very much.
I'm here by myself tonight, but I do want to say thanks to Ms. Vazel, she hired me like last minute Labor Day 10 years ago, so thanks for the job, appreciate it.[1548.13][1548.13](Laughter).
I'm here with my family, I just like to thank them for all the support along the way.[1557.03][1557.03](Applause). Thank you. I'm going to talk a little bit more because I like to talk. So I do, if you only knew the things that I say to Pete, that he lets me get away with, he lets me talk, he lets me vent, he lets me argue with him, and just lets it kind of go away, because he has a daughter that's got red hair, and we've talked about that before. So he lets me blow up at him all the time, so I appreciate that. My husband appreciates that, so I don't do it with him when I go home.[1591.13][1591.13](Laughter). And it's amazing working at the high school. I've been at the high school since 1995, and how many people I work with now that I had in school, that I taught when I was teaching, and it's just great that they all come back and they want to work in Roseville, so thank you.[1613.03][1613.03](Applause).
Hi, I'm here myself, but I started 25 years ago at Roseville High School, and I'm still at Roseville High School, and I love Roseville High School.[1625.42][1625.42](Laughter).
I'm proud to work with such an amazing staff, and I would like to congratulate all the other honorees this evening. Thank you.[1635.83][1635.83](Applause).
Well, the plan was to bring the whole family, but my oldest has a big paper due tomorrow, my daughter has to work, thank God, she has a job, and my 13-year-old rolled his eyes.[1648.75][1648.75](Laughter). So, so this is my family, it's always been my family, and I am one of the luckiest people ever, so thank you, Mr. Coment, for dealing with me all these years. Thanks to Mr. Frank Bencina for hiring me, and thanks to, I was just thinking about, Claudia was one of my first, there she is, she put up with me when I first started, I knew nothing. So thanks, Claudia. It's great eating lunch with you every day.[1672.21][1672.21](Applause).
I'm here with my husband Tom, and I want to thank him for all the honeydew things that I have him do with the crazy art programs, the, yeah, and all the craziness that he has to deal with on a daily basis. I want to thank also being a part of this community, it's been a wonderful joy, and when I start seeing students that I had when I first started working, it's like, oh my goodness.[1702.53][1702.53](Laughter). I'm not getting older, you guys are.[1705.42][1705.42](Laughter). So thank you for this opportunity.[1707.88][1707.88](Applause).
We want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I know you, Lila, you're tired after a long day's work. We do appreciate you coming, this is fun stuff. I know we don't get to say this very often, but thank you for working for Roseville Schools. Have a great night.[1726.13][1726.13](Applause).[1727.13][1727.13](Music)[1728.13]